This is the regular meeting of the town.
This turned up volumes up a bit.
This is the hybrid meeting. First item on our agenda is the minutes tomorrow. I think that comes to a conclusion in a minute. And the motion for approval, that's second. Second, all there. It's approved. So a public comment for the hybrid meeting. Now, we have some under the press here. No, it was a public present. But we would take comments by email. If people wish to send comments to the E O S distribution at K N C T dot gov. And so we'll watch your comments and read them accordingly. First item on our agenda for. Third, our agenda is our vice director, Steve. Remotely. In your seat. So the. I don't recall. Or I don't recall this.
Five thousand dollars.
So whatever, we. We have signed a contract specifically. An approval of the contract that I had assigned yesterday. For the fourth benefit. Questions to you, Steve.
So same organization that we've used in the past?
Yes.
Same shell, same company.
For years they have been.
Right.
The contract, the contract is cancelable. I think it's still a cancelable. It's still a condition, so. But July third, not July fourth.
July third and July, July eleventh.
So unless there's any questions to Steve to answer, I will approve this.
Why, why did we move to the third?
The part that the company wasn't available on the fourth.
I will, I will review the contract or second.
Okay, Steve, you're done.
Thank you, Steve.
That was easy.
Yes, my, that is.
She had that. Number six.
She asked to come up, I said she can see that. Well, that's really.
Yeah.
And when do you have her call?
Lynn, if you could come on up to the meeting room, thank you.
Okay, I'll be up.
Before is the banking services.
I'm here and Andrew is also. Hopefully we can, we can hear it. But as, as we've mentioned before, we, we went out to get a contract. We had six hundred bank, six. Six banks, six banks come in with over a hundred questions. As, as follow up, we submitted bids and then we provided opportunity for follow up questions. The same follow up questions. We responded to the nexus of a hundred questions. And then we invited five banks to, to come in and, and visit with us. We had J P Morgan, People's Bank, M T G Bank. We had a committee that reviewed this, committee composed of myself, our controller, Ryan Moon, tax collector, Roseanne, town treasurer, Andrew Brooks, and we didn't call Tucker, our town administrative officer, and Joshua, our financial analyst. In reviewing these R F Ps, the things that we looked for were, did they meet the operational requirements of the town? Were they compliant with the R F P, the proposal that was put forward? And the R F P was put together in, in conformity with G O A best practices of banking R F Ps. We looked at the firm's experience, specifically with municipal banking experience. We looked at their financial strength. And then in accordance with our investment policy, we also looked at safety of investments, safety and equity in years in that order. And then we also analyzed their process of transition and how, how well it fits with, with our plans and with our. And based on those recommendations that we, we recommend. Signing with J P Morgan, it is a two year contract that is renewable. After two years, and Andrew, I know you have some comments as well as our town treasurer. You were instrumental in, in this process.
Or can everyone hear me okay? Or am I having the same issue?
It all, Andrew, hang on.
Okay.
Let's try this.
So one, you also think we got one year of no fees. Yes, so among the features of, of J P Morgan, they, they gave us one year of no fees. We went back and, and as some of Andrew's discussion with them, we went back and renegotiated. Because one thing that came up was our tax collector said, the way that we onboard these accounts, tax collections and lockbox comes year two, just because of the timing. And therefore our question was, if tax collection comes year two, would that be the year that the fees begin? And that's where most of the fees, because that's where the government first. And so we were able to negotiate with them that it's year two of every service that comes off. And therefore the tax holder benefits, we have two hundred, essentially three of the agreement. But they were able to find that, which was a significant amount, amount of savings. Unfortunately, the, just the rate environment right now is very low. There wasn't explained, which comes of earnings, but.
You did it on. And I just have a few questions. First of all, thank you for the work that you and the whole team has done, Andrew and, and the group that's worked on this. Just a couple of questions on the, on the safety issue, just as you were evaluating with the banks. Did that include cybersecurity as well?
Yes, that included cybersecurity calls. And I forgot to mention that as part of this review, we had Chris Geisler, our I T director, sat in on the interview. Because there were some specific questions related to cyber. I know there were some that came up. And he was able to address concerns, especially, we are in an online, with a virtual environment, which is unlike other municipal governments. And so there were some additional cybersecurity issues that need to be addressed. And they, they met with.
And then of the requirements also, was the fee fulfillment a significant difference? When you done with the, the five banks or their fees and what?
It, it, it was. And so one of the things that tradition, the way that the banks do it, there's a portion of your fees that are credits that are applied to your credit. Most of them use to apply like armament, transportation and whatnot. And then there is a portion that is actual cash credit that goes into the account. One of them offers, the, there's a hybrid model now. And therefore thanks to Andrew, he was able to negotiate with a hybrid model where we all, we get credits and we get the cash, the cash benefit as well. So that was a big component as well. And they were able to respond to the initial bid. We were able to go back and renegotiate. Higher than this credit.
And one last question. So the cash balances that we maintain, and that can be quite high in certain periods of the year, right?
Right, so it fluctuates based on two tax collections peaks. Some average taxes of, average balance is about seventy five, seventy six maybe or so.
And so is there, is there a credit that were given there in terms of a, any sort of yield on that cash balance or?
There's some, there isn't a whole lot of yield now. But I think based on the balances that we have, our credits more than pay for the, for any fees that they have. So we end up benefiting. And especially with the due credit in the past, we would just get the credit. And so we had a significant amount of unused credits.
Right.
And therefore now that you have the credits plus the, plus the cash benefit, we will also get a cash benefit. So we wouldn't be losing our unpracticed.
Right, thank you.
And, and I would just add, if folks can hear me. Can, can everyone hear me?
Sort of, go ahead.
Okay, so the rates that we were able to negotiate a floor rate, that's more than double what we're currently earning at, at our current bank. So as interest rates rise in the future, hopefully, we'll get to go up the roller coaster, so to speak. But we're currently at the floor and that floor is double what we currently are at. So I think we, we did very well with going back and forth with Chase. And they were very amenable to, to, you know, meeting our requirements and, and seeking our business. Then the, the other piece I would add Kathleen, in terms of those big balances is the safety piece. And they've agreed to fully collateralize all of our deposits across all accounts. Right now with Webster, we just have one account that's fully collateralized. The rest are only collateralized at the statutory minimum, which is ten percent. We're now going to have full hundred percent collateralization of all of our deposits at Chase, regardless of what sub account they're in. So that, I know that that was a term that, that London and I were very focused on ensuring this round we, we had in place.
We got that, thank you.
Great, great job, London and.
So I would also commend London and Andrew and the whole team for the process they went through. And I know that since J P Morgan, really a national leader in the municipal and state plan. Service with eighteen hundred clients in forty states. I believe they serve.
Yes.
They're very happy that they could.
They have some balances with us, although we currently have what's in.
So we don't actually have the agreement up there, we have a memo.
No, so the agreement is going to be drafted and we'll have to determine these, but just.
Well, we are actually.
And they have a local branch, which I thought was important.
So I guess we're voting on that. Yes, approval request from the chief financial officer, Andrew from the. Did you want to change your bank services to describe? We don't actually have the agreement.
We will bring the agreement.
I'll say. Scott, please say. Thank you, London.
Thank you, and, and Linda, should I mention the other?
Linda, Andrew's chiming in, sorry, Andrew.
The, the only other minor update I want to provide is we're also, you know, there was a second R F P for a smaller dollar amount to just place funds to earn a higher yield. And I just wanted everyone to know that we are going to be moving forward with Bankwell's insured cash suite product. I know Nick and Kathleen and, and Kevin, we've spoken about this offline. But I just wanted to, to let you all know that we, we did have a conversation with Bankwell late last week. And we are going to be moving forward on, on placing funds in that program. And those funds will earn almost double the yield that Chase is willing to give us as a floor. So that's really the, the, the purpose for, for that. So I just wanted to point that out today.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, so what Andrew was, that was number six that Andrew just discussed.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Number five. So we're ready for number six.
Let's move on. It's.
Hi, Lynn. Um, so I'm here for you guys, sort of on a little technicality. The, the P and Z, their April twenty seventh meeting. Total of the library and applicant president before them that they would like to use section eight point one E of the U F L P K N Z regulations to hire outside consultants to do similar viewable work. We received two bids. We selected the one that was across key architects. And it was worth ten thousand five hundred dollars. And the way it works is the library, the app contributes required to submit a hundred fifty percent of the estimate, which would be two thousand seven fifty, to pay for the cost of the consultant. But the consultant is paid out by the town and it's over ten thousand dollars. So we're here, so the funds are available if we've already received the money from the town, but we're going to.
In library.
I'm sorry.
See if the voucher will ever.
We did, we received a voucher from the library already. Like it hasn't been taken secure. And it is, it's all available. So we received the proposals on May seventh. The, the consultant did the second is on, on May fourteenth. Presented his findings at the May twenty fifth P and Z meeting. And then the board of directors offered that. The first amendment, Mr. Morton, signed off on our May seventh meeting. So that was coming through.
And I assume the library.
The balance is out, I think that's enough, yes.
Any questions, please?
Thank you.
Pleasant, thank you. And we do request from the town library general to back to the cross key architect policy.
Hi.
Hi, thank you. Here we go, to number Tigers. More Tiger, more. So we have two extensions of contracts. One for micro set overlay and the other for our Cape seal. And she, they're both with Indus Industries, formerly Stichlun Incorporated. We had a bid back in twenty seventeen for both the microphone overlay and Cape seal. And Indus then agreed to maintain their pricing for this construction season. So for the microton overlay of nine rows, we're looking at a price of two hundred and four thousand five seventy five. With the dividends give thirty thousand sixty six for a total of two thirty five, two sixty one. And then the case of as well, the case of project, it's a hundred and eighty four thousand seven twenty five. With continued three point seven seven oh nine for total two one two four zero four. So that.
Just to remind you, Tiger, because I know we just, we just grouped something from.
Cracks seal.
For the cracks.
Yeah, I needed to, needed just to review the, the amount of funding we had left to make sure that we could handle these contracts. So for the crack seal over, since then, stores and formals and. So so make sure.
Fundly, right. And so this represents what the, is this the annual, typically the annual fee that comes out of the, this fund? About two hundred thousand, for instance, for my birthday overlay and then another two twelve thousand. Is that roughly what we should spend for?
Last year was some more, it's about five hundred thousand. And really depends upon our schedule of paving. So what we try to do is pave on year one, crack seal on year five. Year ten, we crack seal, the microton overlay, or crack seal and cape seal at that time. It's year ten, year fifteen, crack seal again, year twenty, we'll take it all back down and we'll repay. So really it's based upon what happened ten years ago. All right, so what, ten years ago, this is exactly what occurred. So you know, we're looking at year before, we had more of those. So that kind of gives you an idea of how we're working for our schedule for paving management.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Which is our annual.
Yeah.
For that. State grant, you know, state grant. Yes, we get two state grants, one's a hosted grant, grew about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then the other one, it's a T A R grant, telling a group of about three hundred thousand. That's, that's based upon. So. Any questions?
Who's number, who's number one?
I will approve all requests, one is for the Indus to do the microton overlay, the total two thirty five, two five, two sixty one. The others for Indus to do Cape seal. Various town roads, that's total two twelve, four thirty four. Second. Thank you. Scotty. All there.
Hi.
Thank you, thank you very much. Our town whip, my show.
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, I didn't see you. Where are you? Okay. She's here.
Great. Claudia and I are here to present to employees for part time work in the town clerk's office. One is Sharon Winter, who has actually worked with Claudia for a while now. And we'd like to continue and encourage her to work in the town clerk's office. We got by saying and other administrative duties in the town clerk's office. And she has got a new particular Kevin O'Connor, that she would like to come in to work on special projects in the town clerk's office. And Claudia, if you would like to maybe give a little background on both of these, that would be helpful.
On, on, I can't, I can't hear too well, but did you say on both of them or on Kevin or?
I would start with Kevin.
Okay. My request is to bring Kevin O'Connor on to work on special projects. And he is completely trained in the, he's a fully trained election staff member. And he's trained on the Connecticut voter registration system. So I've been wanting to use him for absentee ballots and of course, referenda and things like that. I also have some other projects related to elections that I need to have done. And it involves a little bit of time and research. I would also like some help in the, the vault with records management and clearing some of that out and rearranging some things. So I just need an extra set of hands. We've been extremely busy with recordings. We've brought in probably more this year than we have in the past two decades. It's just been amazing. And so the regular staff is just very, very tied up with, with land records. So I could use some extra help for that with, with other things. And then as far as the dog licensing goes, Sharon would really be replacing Tom, Tom Grimaldi, who we had for many years. And he was on here on an annual basis, sometimes during like June, July. It was, you know, full time during the week for dog licensing. And then at other times, maybe nothing during the week or two days a week or one day, just keep the dog licensing up to date. And then she has been very helpful in, in providing support staff while everyone else is busy with recordings and vital, vital records. She's been able to do other things like make land survey maps upon request and make copies and prepare packets, information packets and things like that. So those were my requests.
So two questions, Claudia, I'm not sure, thank you for that. I'm not sure if you can hear us well, but. So, so the first is, is, I think they're part time positions and I guess one we're extending and one we're bringing on. Do they have an end date or is it not defined?
What I'd like to do is, is a, a continuous, but as needed basis. So if I don't need, Sharon, Sharon is really a continuing throughout the year. Kevin would be called upon for special projects as needed.
Called upon special projects as needed, Kevin. Sharon would be more of a full time, a full permanent, permanent period of part time.
Is Kevin still on? Keep the job with the glass house.
Nick would like to know if Kevin keeps his job with the glass house as well.
I'm, I'm sorry, Kevin would like to know.
Nick would like to know if Kevin still keeps his job with the glass house as well, as working.
I, yeah, I don't know that he is still there at the glass house. I think that he worked there for a while and did some research projects for them as well. It's a nice match for me. I, I honestly can't answer that question, I really don't know.
Thank you.
I just had another question, purely on employment practices. How do we do this when we have positions that are available as a part time or full time in any of our departments, but town clerk's department, any of our, that town?
Do we post these? We normally post the positions, then we will do a series of interviews, position for Kevin O'Connor without listing.
What's the general practice and Claudia, is there a reason why we're not posting these positions when they're available?
Um, I really couldn't speak, speak to that. But I can tell you that both of these people are trained on several, several different modules, several, several different systems that are very specific to our office. And I think that's, I, I, I can't speak to the other. I mean Sharon has been with us since last year.
We said it wouldn't be posting there. But by our policies and procedures, Kevin's position shouldn't be posted.
And, and these positions are. Yes, they have a part time budget, a part time budget by position, budget by expense amounts. And therefore you can be done by one part time, two part time. If there's a dollar amount for part time expenses. Good, thank you.
When I do my budget, I do prepare for this part time as we need it. So, you know, I know certain years we need more, certain years we need less. And so I, I do believe there's money in the budget.
If no further questions, I will approve the request to hire Sharon as a part time assistant. And Kevin O'Connor, special, special product, getting to have a quick call.
Sorry.
Thank you, Claudia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're here to discuss the board on the parking commission recommendations that they had. On whether to defer the commuter permit renewals, use of camera first. And what is a priority permit reinstatement period for new permits brought to.
So two years from when?
Two years from when we start the renewals.
So as I mentioned on last meeting, I wanted to evaluate what the prospect is for the return of the cap. But to be stoked, to be started with a risk I gave that was occurring, correct? That department transportation was so. That's a comment on the COVID schedule that was adopted without hearings for the trains. And in that, they said that the branch that was not materially affected or significantly affected, which is statistically correct, of the fact that they eliminated or through trains in the evening, through trains in the morning, respectively, cancels commuter service. So we sent comments last week to D O T and S B A, the conference call on Thursday, with five parents and area. Commissioner of public transportation and staff. By their turn service, probably to the eighty percent level. But they are going to take that into consideration, this express train issue, which is not only for the King branch, but also people in the rest of the world, other towns that just rely upon express. Central, to really make users train service work. So I was pleased to see that Commissioner David Leven responded to our comments and we talked to the commissioner. So we have work to do to try to get commuter trains back. It's kind of a chicken and egg. No commuter service, people aren't going to want to get on the train. No computers, no, no train service. So it's going to be the challenge for the next few months to get express trains back. But I do, I'm of the opinion now that we're not going to see mass commuting until probably September. So it makes sense, it makes sense, unlike our favorite towns on the branch of the rail line, where they reinstated their parking. A lot, a number of our residents driving their own stations to, to commute. I think we ought to go one more quarter without enforcing the lots and, and also the data response. And so that would be my recommendation, defer until September. It's a big pressure to correct the venue. Also, move to a September, people, traditional July first. Which makes a lot of sense for people.
Makes sense.
They'll actually hurt us for grabbing these information, but that's like. So, and as far as the two year reinstatement period, we sort of always had an informal, unwritten reinstatement for people, especially the lobby or not, but this give the commuters the knowledge that they were, that they did not decide to initially, they would have up to two years to come back and have their priority. A lot they were getting.
Would they, they automatically get that?
They would automatically get.
They would automatically get it. So they chose to defer it within those two years and they needed to go back into the lot that they came out of.
I assume that's the case because numbers are down, but it's a high cost product.
Just remind us, Stacey, the, the number of individuals that actually would be eligible for permits right now. September first are ready to go. And, and how many spaces we have?
The community of permits. We're probably talking about. Well, hundred. People who have current active permits right now.
Okay.
We're oversold, like the lobby room has three hundred and maybe, please, uh, how much? I think have about, have about around that, that many also. And eighty six in British. So how much I'm not a potential of that, but I'm, I'm, yeah. So but we're also with all those lots as we always mentioned, always. Yes. Yeah. So, but I mean, so that's a well.
So I'm just wondering if September first comes along, let's say the train service gets that to express train service. Is there going to be a rush, do you think, in terms of individuals seeking us up?
Well, according to the survey that we did, the majority of people were saying September first is where they were looking, their businesses were looking to start. And again, it all has to do with the return of service for natural law, if they're not working. I know I have a lot of people who do not have town chill. I have no permits at this point. They're on the residence. That weren't permits for town chill when we started giving them out. But it's hard to tell right now for what the inputs are, how many people are going to be there.
And how many days.
Big communications. Plan.
Yeah, yeah. We've seen pre-COVID that a lot of people were looking for home at least on Fridays. We saw a drop in, we saw a little lots on Friday. And again, we're understanding that if people go back there, not going to go back five days a week.
Right.
But they still, if they go back three days a week, still they want.
Absolutely, absolutely. So that there's not.
Easier.
Way, yeah, yeah. If they had, um, they were.
And Kevin, your comment about the, 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 the eighty percent, is that what you mean?
Exactly, that eighty percent.
Oh, they hope, where are they now?
But that, I think. I don't recall. This fellow used to be with the transit and said, I asked him whether the Jersey and French were back. He said, well, they're back eighty five percent. But when he sees Manhattan going back to only four seven subway service subsidized by federal government, I think that the new train percent.
Another several dollars out there in hell.
Or Rescue Act is, you know, and that's getting ten, ten billion dollars for the rescue. So we would hope that your presentation in this, in this state would be important. I think that personally in the stance, that's branch or the legislature understands that it's going to need for your service. I just want to be clear, we're not going to enforce the commuter lots nor the empty spots at the state lots. Nor the boxcar spaces in town chill. But the private lots, St. Elris and Molly's, they will be charging the boxcar spaces. So. And also the rates are the ones recommended by the park commission. We could pre-put rates without an increase. So there, there would be the rates, the full year, the yearly rates from September first. You know, twenty one, two thousand twenty two. Well, there's still. Alright, we approve. Referring to community parks and permanent rentals from first for one year with the rates that just approved by the park commission. And also to approve the policy of reinstating for two years commuters. Priority in there, a lot they were getting and they don't initially agree with their promise. Right. Second. Okay, in seconds. For the discussion, good. All there.
Hi.
Okay, thank you, Stacey. Moving on to tax overpayments. There's one real estate and couple of overpayments approved. I will approve them. Second. Discussion, all there. Just for five contracts, something for ten thousand dollars. Questions on those? And just like this comments, I was probably going to make a final call this evening. We're wrapping up testing at ten o'clock this morning. Welcome. And I want to thank the care center of which I think is chair of the board for all their support since last December. Can you read it a little?
It's been a while, yes.
It's been a long while. We've got a lot of testing. And we really appreciate where we are centered by that service. Protesting is widely available at local urgent care centers and. CBS, Walgreens, et cetera. So. The. We have all three vaccinations available. We have a couple more clinics here in June to finish off any people that are over the month. But we have all three vaccines available and we want to emphasize that any employers in town that have local workers that need to be vaccinated, they come to the help room. Or they, we will send them out to their, their, their locations. And we're going to continue to encourage everyone to get vaccinated. And I think that's it on the COVID front. The parade yesterday was fabulous. I know. Very nice room yesterday. I'll have to thank you at that. The chief. Javi, very good for having the police department come to that, that new room. And I think everyone had a good time at the parade. And it was really good to get out in fresh air. Here it wasn't. No.
I thought the room was terrific. It's always better than the room we've been doing for years and years. I think we should have some considerations to making that potentially change.
Picture, right? That it used to go up the whole street.
Yeah. Someone said yesterday, I should prove that to go further on Elm Street. So that'll be for future discussion. Kathy, Nick, a lot of offering comments?
I just thought I'd echo. It was great to see so many smiling faces. I just question on the, and I'm glad for, for coming towards the end of the COVID, to read the testing and the vaccines. Do we have a number in terms of the percentage of the United States that don't have a vaccine?
Well, in the T group, we're up over ninety nine percent. The high eighties could have. The various brackets overall because the company, the total population, where it likes. Fifty five or sixty percent. And that, and that has six thousand, you know, children under eighty twelve. So anyone who wants to get vaccinated, we have two more clinics, I think, for anyone falling over. I believe that's true.
Correct. Second shot.
Second shots.
Second shot, but she will also open it if anyone wants.
So if, if someone comes for a first shot and a second shot, they, they don't have to find their second shot elsewhere.
Uh, no, gentle give it to the health department.
Okay, that's, that's clear. We, we will provide second shot vaccinations to anyone who wants to get vaccinated with the two shot. Otherwise they can do a change day and get one shot and be done.
And what about cancer? The little kids, what do we?
You know, I think during the highs are both working, I getting their vaccines approved for under twelve, for six. But I understand at some point this will move to the administer by the. Doctors rather than by mass vaccination sites. So that mass vaccination will continue to be available in Sanford. And other air locations, but we will set down our, our vaccination program.
So one other, I actually have a question in terms of our upcoming schedule. We have two more meetings scheduled for the month of June. One's just a week away. Is that still the plan?
Yeah, we, we always did that historically because year end, fiscal year end, it was always a desire and get a bunch of contracts. By June thirty, but we may not have the need.
I, I asked Tom about that. He, he put this calendar together a year ago and he said that exactly that, it can always be canceled immediately.
Which one will be canceled first?
Maybe the next one.
Well, the next one is two weeks away, which is fine. And then the week after that, it's just a week away due to twenty seconds. So it's up to you.
Well, listen. So plans are going forward for the down court. Yes, they showed us the proper step for down court.
Is that only the union residents only?
And their guests.
And their guests. And the traditional way in which the. The carload tickets, if you will, are sold.
Passes will be sold.
Passes will be sold in the traditional way.
And we're probably limiting.
We are limiting the number of passes.
Two hundred.
Less, less than we did last year for residents. We shouldn't be able, you know, I would expect there should be some drop off.
Yeah.
You know, a hundred thirty five thousand people, the ticket house, five hundred, I think, for sure. But we're, we're getting.
When is this going to go, it's going to go on sale?
Uh, they start selling at June nineteenth at Walter Stewart's that weekend and June twenty sixth, we'll have them online probably right away. We just had our meeting on Thursday where we finalized all of this. So I'd imagine they're going to be available online starting.
First come, first served.
Yes.
You might have to repeat that because you weren't on your microphone.
Um, just on the family force, uh, ticket sales, they will be going online probably this week online. I'll confirm that. But then they will be available at Walter Stewart's the weekend of the nineteenth and the twentieth, as well as the twenty sixth and the twenty seventh.
And since you're limiting them.
First come, first served because we anticipate we'll probably sell out and we'll use some of the signs to let people know as they're entering the park. We're hoping that that will turn away some people that haven't bought passes yet. Typically, when they get into the park, it's hard to turn them around once they're up there. So we'll have signs saying that sold out.
Thanks to all the Lucian IT intern for setting us up today. We're getting better. I, I refer. And though we're going to have some new cameras in permanent, you would say, but that should come also. Channel seventy nine operating there. I think with that, I think I would.
Second here.
Okay. Thank you all.
Nine nineteen.